Okay.
Welcome, everybody, to the Village of Washingtonville Planning Board Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 28th. It is 7:00. Let's rise for the Pledge of Leadership.
(Inaudible)
Thank you all for coming. If anybody grabbed an agenda, please note one little typo at the top. This is a regular meeting, not a work session. At our regular meetings, which is the second of the month, we do allow time for public comment after the applicant has presented. There is a sign-up sheet for public comment. It's available to your left. To comment, please sign up. You will have three minutes to give your comment to the board. Do you understand this is not a Q&amp;A session for the board, but an opportunity for us to hear your comments? So, to begin, our applicant is Ephraim Halpert, North 36 LLC, 36 North Street, application for site plan, section block and lot 107-2-63. Our end zoning district proposed use is a multifamily dwelling with public utilities. Revised site plan proposal includes constructing one six-unit townhouse dwelling and keeping and converting existing single-family home to a two-family dwelling and removal of existing garage. Applicant is seeking referral to the ZBA. Mr. Neil McCallum?
I did not say that. We're seeking -- it was my understanding from our last meeting that perhaps we were on that process of being referred to the ZBA. The plans you have in front of you have not changed since the last meeting, and the sets that were given to John Terry for the ZBA are these plans that you have before you. Subsequent to that meeting, the idea that a long-form EAF needed to be prepared, we did so. We received John's comments. To the best of my knowledge, we incorporated those comments into the EAF, which was passed out to you tonight, and also, we did email it electronically. Actually, there's no other way to email it, right? It has to be electronically, a PDF set for everyone to review. To the best of my knowledge and procedures that we've come across on different other municipalities, believe this suffices to allow you as a board to refer us to the ZBA so that we can address the variances needed before proceeding with any other site design.
Thank you for turning around the changes so quickly. I know it came over today around 1:30. I have not yet gotten to go through it all, but I'm about halfway there. I don't know if anyone else had any questions on that just yet, or if you're still looking at all, or if, John, you had a chance yet to see the revised?
I didn't have a chance to write anything up, but I did go through it. They corrected most of the items. We still have a few. One was my fault. Microsoft formatting error. Under government approvals, it should have been item C, not item A.
Could this be?
Yeah.
Item C is the zoning board of appeals, so that should be a yes.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
And my formatting error, I gave you a -- put you a yes for A, not for C. So, A should actually be a no.
Should be yes.
Correct. That was my fault.
What was the second one, John? I'm sorry.
Just under government approvals, we don't need the village board, so that should be a no. But we do need the ZBA, so that should be a yes.
Right. Okay.
And then, on page two, middle of the page, the total acreage to be physically disturbed. I think the .54 you're giving, Dave, is probably your impervious area. Page two.
Page three.
Oh, sorry, page three.
Actually, you know what, John? I've given some research here. So, the .54 refers to the total impervious area. Okay? So, this is looking for total physically disturbed, which could --
Means anything during construction.
Probably an acre, an acre and a quarter. .576, but can't be.
And that would mean you're disturbing less than half of the parcel.
Well, we're not disturbing the front, except for the sidewalk. We're not disturbing the back.
Well, you're cutting open a 50-foot wide swath to put the road in. You're cutting open a 30-foot swath to put utilities in. You're cutting a 10-foot swath to put the walkway in. You're cutting another 30-foot swath to realign the existing driveway.
Yeah, the existing drive relocation is 1,574 square feet. Existing house is 1,626 square feet. The new building sidewalk and rear parking was 13,00846. The new drive is 5,0438. The new concrete sidewalk is 520. I just -- yeah.
Based on what you drew, Dave, there's no way this is half acre.
Yeah, I'll double-check over.
If it doesn't hurt anything, if you're going to put down an acre or an acre and a quarter, it's got to be reasonable.
I have no problem with that at all.
And then, skipping to page five. I'm not really sure how you're coming up with the water usage.
110 gallons per bedroom? Three-bedroom units?
Okay, so that would be 18 units. So, you're doing --
Well, six --
And then you --
Six times, or 18 units times --
But then you've got the existing two.
Even though it's -- it's already --
A part of the total.
Okay. Makes sense.
And then, as you revise the plans, you should spell out what the unit count is going to be.
Okay.
And then, that same number would apply to section D where you have the sewer walls.
Yep. Not a problem.
And then, page six, item E, you're still showing 46 acres of proposed impervious. Point four six. I've got 46.
Yeah. I think it's a 10.
Yeah, I believe that decimal disappeared too.
Okay. If you make it a zero point, it won't fall off.
It'd be a 10, was .46. All right. We will do a zero in front of that.
Page --
I have to take someone to task for that.
Page seven, really more of a question. You're saying that you're including proposed access to public transportation or accommodation for hybrid or electric or alternative used vehicles.
In shape, we say no.
But then, when you get down to J -- uh, J7, you say yes.
Oh.
I had asked about that, and just an explanation of what it is you're doing if you are incorporating that.
You know, I'll tell you right now, the industry is definitely leaning towards electric cars and providing vehicle charging stations, so that might be something that we would propose for the building.
If you're going to do it, that's fine. We leave it as a yes. We would probably be looking for something showing that the existing electric service to the property is not a required thing, if you don't want to commit to it.
Okay.
And then, bottom of that page, not a big deal, but hours of operation. I'm assuming these houses are not going to be closed Saturday, Sunday, holidays.
Not at all. So, you want it at 24 hours a day, all the way down?
Yeah. I mean, that's what they're going to use the house for, so that's -- And then, page eight, and talking about the lighting. LED fixtures, 15-foot-high beam downwards as per plan. We don't have a lighting plan yet, so you can't rely on the plan. But are we doing building lights? Are we doing pole-mounted lights for the parking area? What kind of lighting levels are you looking at? What's going to be the illumination at the property lines? You know, a little more information as to what it's going to be. Or you prepare a lighting plan, and it would be per plan.
You know, I'm sure that's another thing we need to discuss in detail further along in the process. I would be open to suggestions, so we can wait and find out what ZBA goes.
Okay.
And I'll take that out in the meantime.
Page 11, as far as surface water features, that is looking to identify the DEC wetland number. E2. Item H is surface water features. Item four is for each identified regulated wetland or water body on the project site, provide good information. You said above, you do have them, so just give a name to it. You already have your letter saying you're not impacted by it.
Right. There was one that the program generated that we could not change. E2H2 was a program-generated comment. And that's fine. I'm not saying it's a problem for you, but in this form, the board is going to certify as correct. They just need to have all the information in there.
Sure. You already have your letter saying no impact.
Right.
But just get it in the document, right?
So, is E2H2 supposed to be no?
No, there are adjoining wetlands, but it's asking for them in four to identify exactly which one, so John's saying that he needs to identify the wetland number.
When you go through and do this correctly on the DEC website, which they did, the DEC pretty fills in for you certain items that they're aware of. And this is one where they said yes, there is a one. And then, top of page 12, your predominant wildlife species is not going to be your endangered species. Predominant is going to be your squirrels, raccoons, typical local wildlife. yourselves a lead agency. I know, Bob, you had additional questions about traffic. Setting a lead agency status is not saying we're done, and then you approve it. It's saying the information is complete enough that other agencies can review it. So, if you're at that point, that would be your next step.
And if we were at that point, would we accept that with the proposed changes we just discussed?
Correct.
Because as it's typed, it's --
Okay.
Did you go over the driveway situation with neighbors, right turns, left turns, and your thought process and how that's going to work out?
Well, they'll be entering and exiting off of North Street, so we definitely took into consideration access into the site. We know a traffic report will be needed once we come back during the technical process, and we can get that prepared and submitted at that time. I mean, right now, it's, in my opinion, it's an easy left and an easy right into the project coming from either direction, coming from the north or from the south. The traffic travel, as we show the site distances on two S, C2, the site distances for both vertically and horizontally work well. There's no, nothing impeding someone from seeing oncoming traffic in either direction.
Okay, but wasn't there another driveway to the south, as I recall?
Yeah, at the existing house, we're using the north.
To the north?
Yeah.
Just on the other side of the property line from the proposed driveway is the existing driveway going to the cemetery.
Okay. Now, for some reason, I was thinking with the new driveway that's proposed, was there another driveway to the south of that that we had to be concerned with?
Well, we were talking about maintaining the existing curb cut for the house, which is going to be converted to a two-family.
Okay.
So, there's actually two driveways total for the proposed project.
Okay, so the proposed driveway, the new one, the bigger one, doesn't affect any adjacent property, regrets or drive?
Well, the bigger one was the one that we had discussed. It's being fairly close to the cemetery driveway. We would be looking for something from their traffic professional justifying that it will not be an issue, or what accommodations have to be made because of their proximity.
Okay. So, that's the, that was the concern, one of the concerns I had. The other concern, sometimes North Street gets backed up pretty good. Any thought process there that we have to be concerned with? Buses?
Well, I know you have concerns, and we did discuss with the applicant last month or the month before, and they are aware they're going to have to get a traffic engineer involved to give answers to all those questions.
Okay.
So, it will be addressed, decided later?
Okay. I'm okay with that.
You know, basically, tonight, we're looking to start the secret review with everyone else. And then, during that review, whatever information you or other agencies feel is needed would be generated before you're asked to approve anything.
Okay. So, what I would recommend is if the board wants to feel that it's appropriate to declare themselves as lead, or put out the intent to declare themselves as lead agency, that's fine. Mr. Neil McCallum, as you know, that starts certain timeframes, and because you are going to be going to other boards, I'm asking that you waive any timeframes that require us to SECRAB?
Yes.
Okay. So, because of that, then I think it's appropriate for the board to put their intent to declare themselves as lead agency. In addition, the question of referral to the ZBA, as we spoke at length at the last meeting, it's my opinion that I think the ZBA is, well, the ZBA cannot make any final approvals without a secret determination from this board. So, they can make that, they can see this project and put out a flat denial without SECRAB. I don't think they're going to go either way. I don't think they're going to be able to make a decision, because I think they're going to also request certain things from this board to review and have, and have their own questions. So, if you want to put out your intent to declare lead agency, that's fine. If you want to wait to then declare yourselves as lead agent and then put it out to the ZBA, if you want to see additional --
I don't know what's going on right now, just sort of traffic.
But your first question is, would we start the review process environmentally with other agencies? And that's one decision. The second decision would be, do you want to refer it to the ZBA at this point? Or you feel that you should wait for more information? We can send it to the ZBA. What Stephanie's saying, she doesn't feel the ZBA will have enough information to make a decision.
And they can't until, well, approval can't happen until --
They can make a decision, they can't give a formal approval.
Until a secret is done.
Correct.
I mean, do you feel that that's going to waste the applicant's time by going to the ZBA? I mean, I don't want, you know, your time wasted either. We don't think they're going to make a decision without more information, unless you just want to have a conversation with them.
You know, it's been our experience that the zoning boards in different municipalities have acted, you know, once we make the application, because we're not asking for a design review, we're asking for variance. So, the question there is, will they grant the variance? And that, again, it's been my experience, is foremost. In fact, planning boards refer, actually, building departments have actually referred this directly to the zoning board to get the variance first before going to a planning board process. So, I can understand the thoughts that were expressed, yet I, you know, believe the zoning boards should be in a position to review the project and make their comments regarding the variances that are needed.
So, can I make the motion that we petition for lead agency?
Put our intent for lead agency, yes.
Okay, so I'll make that motion in regard to become lead agency.
Just give me a second. Send the motion. Take a vote, Rich. Aria?
I'm --
And I'm coming.
Can we talk just a little bit more about lighting? And, I'll ask our engineer, whatever we do now, if we give the okay to go to the zoning board, the lighting plan, if we want a full lighting illumination plan, we can still get that correct?
Yes, you're not approving anything. You're just allowing for other agencies to look at the plan as well.
In our vote to declare ourselves as lead agency, do we need to include language that they're waiving their timelines and deadlines?
We can, it's just acknowledge on the record that they've waived any SECRAB timeframes. So, I will, with that, go ahead and prepare that and coordinate. David will coordinate with you. I'll make sure, obviously, that you get it, so that you, because you'll be responsible for the mailings.
Yes.
And I'll provide you a sample of the irregularities that I'll require for the mailings, and then obviously looking for the certified mail.
Will you be getting the addresses from this?
So, I give you a proposed list of what I believe is missing. I typically don't remove anything, even if the applicant asks, but if you want to add on more agencies, I'm always going to do that.
And is it registered mail or certificates of mail?
Certified mail.
Okay.
Not a problem. And if you want to get in a revised, or you have the idea of as quickly as possible, so that can be included with whatever.
Yes, I will definitely, I will absolutely do that, because I will circulate that with the, you will have to circulate that with the --
Okay, we will have that to you. There's no, there's really no more calculations. The only one that, the only one that causes me a little bit is the naming was one of the last ones. The surface water features, the name of wetlands or water bodies that are drawing the project site. And I do, we do have a letter from the DEC, but I'm, I'm not recalling the naming.
Well, the state has wetland mapping.
On the GIA.
And they'll call it, you know, wherever the quad number is.
Okay.
And then, a designated wetland number. If you have a designated wetland or state wetland, typically it has a number. If it doesn't, then the answer would be unnamed.
Okay, other than that, I think we should be able to have this to you before the end of the week, without question.
In that case, I'll work on, if you have to meet by Friday, I'll work on having his draft intent next week, and getting it finalized.
You want to vote for your girl? Yes. Somebody wants to make a motion to refer our applicant here to the zoning board?
I'll make a motion that we refer our applicant to the zoning board.
And we want a second?
A second.
For the vote, Rich?
Aye.
Aria?
Aye.
Aye.
So, just, just so the applicant knows, the ZBA attorney asked that I send the letters determining what the board is seeking. So, the variance in question is the additional two units. Yes, that's the variance.
The area associated with the additional two units?
Right.
Or the reduction of area, yes.
Yeah, and there's a question on how the ZBA would want to actually quantify that, whether it's extra units or reduction in area.
And per unit. I'm, yeah, and I can put that, I can explain that in my letter to their attorney. That's precisely the reason why she's looking for it in writing now, so that they --
And just to be clear, it's the, the house being converted stays no matter what the determination is, and if they have to reduce anything, it's going to be the building, correct?
That's my, that is my understanding.
And then, not that it shouldn't matter, but since they're going, they have two existing non-conformities.
Yeah, those will actually also have to be --
As long as they're going anyway, might as well document it.
Yeah, those definitely have to be approved, because it's opening up the whole site plan.
That was the same as, as last time, even when it was before with the subdivision, the number, yeah, the existing applicable is also muted.
Yeah, and they're not going to tell you, you have to pick up the existing house and move. It's just a matter of documenting.
No, no, this, this is great. It's a codifying of the existing condition, so we're talking about the 26.9 front yard and 28 side yard.
Okay. Do we have any other business to discuss before we open up to the public?
No. I mean, as, as it's been made clear, there's no decisions made, this is the start of the process. The ZBA will have a chance to comment. I will let, you know, that board to see how they find appropriate, and this does not, obviously, waive anything like lighting. All of that is absolutely going to be required, traffic, all of that's going to be required as part of the full secret review for this, for this project.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? I'm going to give a quick summary of comments. Rich, do you want to keep time?
Oh, you better.
I will call your name up in the order, and Richard is here on the sheet. You have three minutes to give your comment to the board for consideration. Just a reminder, this is not a Q&amp;A for the board, but an opportunity for us to hear what you have to say on a project. First up is Susan Waltski, 24 South Street, Washington. to say on the project. First up is Susan Wolski, 24 South Street, Washington, D.C.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My first comment is that they have labeled the building on here as a garage. It is not a garage. It is a dairy barn that dates back to 1937, and I would request that it be checked that this barn does not qualify for the New York State Historic Barns Preservation Act before it is destroyed. I'd also ask that, since the house next door was the pastor's house, it was quite common in times before the 1900s for indigents to be buried just outside the cemetery limits so that a carbon sampling be done to make sure there are no human remains on the property. Thirdly, the wetlands are not just from above-ground soakage, but there are underground tributaries there that feed into Cemetery Creek, which does ultimately feed into the Moonde Creek. I would suggest a hydro study to make sure that the weighted impact of the buildings being put on the property do not affect those tributaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Bobby Trager.
I'm the following one, but we're both representing the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
So I'll just say what our concerns are, if that's all right. We, we come into these meetings because we do have some of the same concerns she brought up. The building that is looking to be separated to two buildings was our original lands. We had purchased the 10 acres, so we already knew it was wetlands at the bottom, really can't be used. What we're worried about is flooding on the cemetery and the fact that we have a wall that was built in the 1800s, a stone wall that you can see. And we are also very concerned about our driveway, which of course was, was brought up also. The lighting in there, so all those are things that you say that you're gonna look at, but the thing that we were really very worried about was the flooding. And if any of the land is, because it has been labeled wetland, anything that's going under, we don't want any of our residents to be disturbed.
Thank you for your comment. That is all who signed up. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make a comment before we close out the meeting? Anything else, board members? Any questions?
Very well, conference go on, and I appreciate it.
Anything else that you're business? Motion to adjourn?
I'm holding.
Someone make a motion to adjourn?
We're...
You just want to announce where the next meeting is? Sure. Hello? Tuesday, October 12, 7:00 PM is our next meeting, which is a work session. That's Tuesday, October 12.
Nothing noticed for that agenda yet, but do applicants still have time to submit?
Motion to adjourn? Second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
I don't owe a favor.
I agree.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming today.